Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 9, 2022 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. All right. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Thank you. All right. The next item, item for information, is student recognition. There's a DECA international competition.
Is there ever? You know, anytime that we have any of our students compete at a really high level and do really well, we welcome the opportunity to have come and be recognized and honored by the board. And, you know, our DECA program has been doing well for many, many years, even Ms. Weber, with the previous advisor. But I must say, Ms. Weber has really put her heart and soul into this program. She accompanied these DECA students to, I believe it was Atlanta, is that right, for the international competition? And they really represented ETHS well. So Jenny, I'm going to invite you up to introduce our achievers. And then, I don't know quite how you're going to orchestrate it, but get them all up to the lectern with you at some point, and then I'll give everybody directions what comes next. It is painless.
Okay. So after two years of cancellations and virtual competitions, it is with great honor that I am able to stand here before you to recognize these students who have dedicated so much of their own time in DECA. These students started working on their 20-page marketing research plans or 11-page business plans within the first two weeks of school starting. They dedicate their lunch periods, free periods, coming in before and after school to work on these projects. In addition, these students practice their presentations with me, starting as early as 7:30 a.m. As you might know, DECA is a high school competitive business club where students can compete in role plays and written competition. This past March, 24 students attended the Illinois Career Development Conference in Rosemont that hosted 1,200 high school students for the first time since the pandemic started. I had the pleasure of working with seven of those students individually on their marketing papers, as well as their entrepreneurship plans. It is my pleasure to notify you that of those seven students, all seven placed top 10 and all seven placed first in their event at state competition.
Wow.
In addition, we had two students place for their role play competition as well. These students earned the opportunity to compete at the international competition that hosted over 17,500 high school students from across the United States, as well as from other countries such as Mexico, Guam, Spain, China, and Germany in Atlanta, Georgia. It is my pleasure to recognize the following students and their accomplishments at the state competition, as well as at the international level. Sebastian Schultz and Braden Weiss took first place at the state level in their hospitality and tourism operations research event, focusing in on accommodating staff during the COVID pandemic at five and dime. Sophia Cosma took first place at state in her startup of business plan, Sweet Eats, a bakery targeted specifically to individuals who have a variety of allergies. Sophia earned competency at the international competition, scoring at least a 75% on her presentation. Evan Berger and Justin Davis took first place at the state level in their franchise of business plan, purchasing franchise rights to Edzo's Burger Shop. Evan and Justin earned competency at the international competition, scoring at least 75% on their presentation. Jonah Gerstein and Caleb Gerstein took first place at state in their sports entertainment marketing operations research event, focusing in on accommodating staff during COVID at Camp Timberlane. Jonah and Caleb earned competency at the international competition, scoring at least 75% on their presentation. The following individuals qualified to compete at the international competition in their individual competitive role play event. Sophia Cosma took second place in her entrepreneurship individual series, but she competed in her written event at Nationals, because you can only do one, you can't do two. Mateus Solis took second place in his Principles of Business Management. Toreen Ravi took fifth place in his Principles of Business Management Role Play. Toreen, as a first-year member, competed in his event at the international level against 250 other individuals in Atlanta, Georgia. Toreen not only placed in the top 20 of his event, but also in the top 10, earning an overall eighth place. Unfortunately, due to AP exams, him catching COVID, he could not come tonight, so he's here with us in spirit. Pictures and videos of their experiences at state, as well as at the international competition, can be found on the ETHS DECA Instagram page if you'd like to see them. And on a final note, I would like to thank my co-advisors, Dave Feely and Chris Manila. As you know, Dave is retiring at the end of this year, and I am so thankful for all that he has done for our DECA chapter over the years. I look forward to having him continue to help grow our chapter and continue to work with our students. In addition, I would like to thank my department head, Dr. Shelley Gates. I still remember when I was in high school competing. She was chaperoning DECA with my dad, who was the DECA advisor here as the ETHS DECA elites competed. Her support over the past years has just been amazing. I'm so thankful to have such a supportive department chair, who I can go to for guidance, support, as well as amazing leadership. Lastly, I would like to thank you, the board, for allowing us to run DECA here at ETHS. The opportunities, as well as the experiences that these students get from these conferences, are truly limitless. So thank you for your support.
So first of all, that was my little reference to that we've had great leadership at DECA, and Jenny came in and took it, kept it going to higher and higher levels, because, yes, her dad was the DECA advisor, goodness, for how many years, a number of years here at ETHS. And we still see him. He comes back for retiree events and that, and is a real wild kid. But to our student achievers, we are so proud of you. You, in the state competition and the international competition, you have just made sure that people know that ETHS produces top students and people who do amazing work. So here's the rest of the program, and Jenny, you too. We want, we're all going to have you come around this little horseshoe, and we'll give you either a fist bump or an elbow bump to congratulate you. And when you get to our president here, Ms. Savage-Williams, we have a pin for you. Okay, they're not really made of gold, but they are a wonderful way to recognize that you have been recognized by the school board. So congratulations, and let's have you come around, so we can all congratulate you.
What an accomplishment. So proud of you. Really proud of you. Great job.
Thank you so much. I love your jacket. What does it say on the front? Oh, okay.
She's got it covered.
That's awesome. Look at this. All this beaded, sequined.
And you may leave, we know that you have other things to do besides sit through public meetings, but thank you for coming tonight. Really proud of you.
Great way to start the meeting. Wonderful. Okay. So our next item, item on the agenda is Facility Engineering Associates. We have an update, and I believe Dr. Robinson's going to lead this.
And Matt Driscoll, our Director of Safety. And I know that Dr. Campbell and even Dr. Beavis have had involvement in all of this too, and so they'll probably be chiming in. But, Board, I'll begin by saying that we did have Facility Engineering Associates do a thorough safety report on ETHS, and they have reported that to the district. And you were briefed by Paul Timm this evening in closed session, who is actually a vice president and nationally-known safety expert. We briefed you in closed session, because anytime we're talking about safety measures and strategies, clearly, it just, you know, like any organization, you don't publicly tell all of your strategies and all the things that you have in place and you're putting in place to maintain the highest safety quality. So clearly, we followed that protocol, but we do have a nice report tonight to indicate to you a little bit more about what we learn and our commitment to following those recommendations. I'll also point out that in the front row is Terrence Dobie. Mr. Dobie is our assistant in our safety department, so we have the team here to report to you and answer questions. With that, Keith or Matt will turn it, oh, I blew it, and now we'll turn it over to Dr. Campbell. I was actually prompted on this. Sorry about that. Who will give some remarks to frame this?
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Good evening, Board. We appreciate the opportunity to work with an external firm to conduct a thorough security assessment at ETHS. We consistently strive to strengthen our sense of safety and well-being. And I want to speak directly to the topic of metal detectors before we start the presentation, because I know that some in our community have advocated for this approach. I think it's important to first acknowledge that all high schools have safety concerns, and we live in a time when school safety must be the highest priority. As we consider our next steps, I want to make sure we ask ourselves, what is the best approach for ETHS? What is right for ETHS, for our students and for our staff, may not be right for others. Everything we do sends a message about who we are, what we value, and how we function, not just as a school, but as a central resource and venue for this entire community. As a school that tries to do it all, ETHS must reflect on our capacity to serve this community in many different roles, while always prioritizing the safety of our students and staff. Metal detectors do not serve as a preventive measure against school violence, and ETHS cannot give the impression that a solution has been given to a problem that would still exist. But we can take steps to make sure that ETHS is a safer school and a just and equitable learning environment for all students. And we will do this with empathy and compassion for the students and staff who come to this building every day. We will also do this by creating an environment of trust and rapport, where students and staff will speak with us about alarming matters that they know or hear of. Having a safety assessment helps us to hold the mirror to ways we can improve deterrence, detection, delay, and respond in a crisis. There are no simple solutions. That's primarily because metal detectors can be easily bypassed. A few years ago, I attended the American Education Research Association Annual Meeting. A panel made up of researchers and former law enforcement officials were in agreement that one of the main things that minimizes the risk of in-school violence is building a school community of trust, a place where students are seen and feel seen by adults and their peers, a place where we can practice acknowledge, care, tell. Safety comes when students feel loved and valued. We will continue to make our thinking visible to our school community, because this is an ongoing effort and commitment. It is hard to know how a culture of care and concern is built over time here, when there's just a formal assessment or window of time, a week or a day in the building. But please be assured that ETHS will continue to prioritize the safety of our students and staff, and will take specific actions to strengthen our security measures, some of which you were here tonight, and the presentation by Dr. Robinson and Mr. Driscoll. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Witherspoon, and Board, for this opportunity for presenting the safety assessment update. I am sitting here with Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Dobie behind me, and just wanted to give them a shout-out with their leadership, because as you'll see pretty soon, we're doing a lot of really good things, and it directly is because of their leadership and your vision as a board. So I just wanted to start with that. So Mr. Driscoll will kick us off with letting you know a little bit about who actually did the assessment. I'll go through the methodology. We'll talk through some talking points, more specific, and then we'll finish it out. So Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you. Appreciate the Board having me here tonight. So Paul Timm, he started out with the FEA and the assessment. Paul is nationally and internationally known. He's worked with Wyoming School District, with West Virginia. He's even helped train schools in Bermuda. He's at pretty much every conference, and he is the person, the go-to person, if you ever need to know anything about school security. We're very lucky to have him conduct this evaluation. Randy Braverman, former law enforcement officer, 34 years in the business managing security operations. He's overseeing full-scale operations for emergency crisis exercises, and he's also an instructor for the Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board for the Executive Institute for Illinois. All right, so.
I think one of the things, just to note too, about Mr. Braverman, is he was one of the leaders in school safety at Oak Park River Forest. So he is definitely that boots-on-the-ground partner with Paul Timm in this effort. So as far as the Facility Engineering Associations, what they did and do, they have a methodology called Alpha, Advanced Logic Protection heuristic analysis, and this is a way that they conduct their physical assessments. And these guys don't just walk around, you know, they actually do a stress test on some of our systemic practices, which is appreciated. As a matter of fact, one of the days that they came, it was an unannounced visit, just to see if they could actually gain access to the building and some of the systems that we have. During their interview and their assessment, they also had a chance to walk around, to interview some of our staff members, and they got multiple perspectives from our staff, safety staff, administrators, and teaching staff as well. As far as this report, and again, I just want to reiterate it, and I know Dr. Witherspoon mentioned it, but we just, you know, we want to be careful with what we provide. He gave a very specific, detailed report, which is good. And one of the reasons why we don't want to go through all those specifics is we don't want to provide a blueprint on how to access the building. So we just wanted to make sure that was highlighted. These are the tenets of the methodology, deterrence, detection, delay, and response. Mr. Driscoll will kind of go through and give some of the recommendation and examples of these points.
All right. So I actually appreciated the chance to have this evaluation by Paul Timm. You know, we want to be tested, we want to be evaluated, we want to see if the measures we're putting in place are effective, and, you know, they are. The recommendations that we have are more to strengthen and enhance what we already have in place, so that was very pleasing to hear. In the deterrence area, you know, he talked about expanding the use of contraband prohibition. So we're talking about, you know, if you come in some, through some of our doors, we have the little signs that have, you know, the gun on it and the little line through it. We want to expand that to include other weapons that we don't want, that are also included in the pilot. Post-alarm signs in greater view around the building. We want to ensure that exterior doors have corresponding numbers inside. Currently, they're all also on the outside for secondary responders, but we want them on the inside, so people know what exits and entrance they are leaving from. We want to align the landscaping for crime prevention through environmental design, so that, what that is, basically, we want to keep our hedges shorter, so we can look out the windows, no one's hiding in anything. We want to make sure that, you know, the school's still beautiful, but doesn't allow for people to access the building. And of course, we want to repair and maintain fencing. In the area of detection, again, recommendations to strengthen and enhance were achieve, attempt to achieve comprehensive PA coverage. We want to make sure that all areas of the building, everyone can hear us at all times during a drill, crisis, or even just basic announcements. So, you know, we've expanded that, so on the outside, we have bullhorns outside, and you can hear directions and instructions very clear currently. We want to encourage all staff to sign into the ICE program, where basically, you know, an alert goes out and they have it. We also want students to do this, so if they're out grabbing a cheeseburger or something, and there's an incident at the high school, we don't want them returning unnecessarily. You know, we're going to routinely test the local door alarms, so if someone, you know, goes to leave, up on our panel located at our entrances, you know, we can see, you know, door one was accessed. We want to routinely review the door usage reports for our card swipes, things like that, that a lot of our staff and coaches have. And we want to monitor for door propping mechanisms, like the little wood blocks that people put in. Not only does it, you know, damage the door, because it lifts the door up and gets it off its hinges and everything, but in an emergency, we don't want people panicking, trying to close the door, and all they had to do was look down and kind of kick the block out. So we want to make sure those aren't present. Additionally, we want to assure that all unsupervised areas are locked, so classrooms, offices, things like that. We want to ensure that all video surveillance cameras and affiliate systems are functioning properly, so we do a regular check on that. Consider, we're going to utilize existing handheld metal detectors for random searches, as Dr. Campbell had already discussed. We're going to consider requiring all students to register smartphone numbers, so that they can be reached during an emergency, like I just discussed. In the area of delay, we want to improve student scanning and monitoring practices. Currently, as they leave for lunch, everyone scans out. We want to look at and discuss, should they also be scanning back in? We want to make sure that, especially now that everyone's masked up, that we ensure that everyone coming into the building should be in the building. And we want to continue to have routine manufacturer-level door hardware audits. We've already had one come through, and we're just going to continue those about every six months or so. And we're going to consider adopting a practice that requires all classroom doors be closed and locked at all times. For the most part, they are. Our teachers do an excellent job at that, but every now and then, they, you know, rush out to get a student, hey, you forgot this, or you forgot that, and they've left their classroom door open, sometimes keys or whatever left, but for the most part, our teachers do a phenomenal job at locking their doors.
Thanks for that, Mr. Driscoll. And I just want to be clear, to just highlight, that these are items that were recommended for us to strengthen and enhance. You know, it was really good to see in the report that we do so many things well already, but to know that there were some areas of improvement from an outside person obviously gives us hope, to know that we're doing some good things, and gives us a goal to be better. As far as response, you know, I got to tell you, our response team with safety members, they are trained in first aid, CPR, AED, nonviolent crisis intervention, stop the bleed, and even Narcon administration, which is good. And one of the other recommendations that they asked if we continue to expand that training. So again, even looking at the training that we're doing with our staff is really strong, but we want to expand that to do and be better. We also want to consider acquiring additional emergency supplies, be strategic around the building, inside, out, of what we can have to better improve. If you ask what might those items be, I think there's always a good assessment to see what they are. These are anything from wind-up flashlights to bullhorns, any method of communication to improve both inside and out. And also, consider improving our evacuation maps by adding alternative evacuation routes and location of emergency supplies, such as the AED. Again, we do that, there's a systemic structure and system that we have right now. Even on the wall here, you'll see there's an exit plan, but it's a good recommendation to have an alternative plan, and just kind of marked for those who aren't familiar with the building where items such as AEDs are kept. And finally, post-evacuation plans in every room. And, you know, we've done that in every room, but, you know, there was a misstep there with the bathrooms. So we, again, have a list of things that we are going to strive to do better. And finally, I just want to mention that the audit is only as good as the actions that it follows. I think Paul Timm and his company gave us a good roadmap, very thorough. And, you know, as a part of this assessment, they've given us some prioritization points to work from. So there are some major ones that we want to make sure that we hit first. We're going to continue to commit to improving the safety and security for all of our staff, but we're also committed to working with outside vendors and companies, with people who can give us those multiple perspectives ongoing. So that's, I think, is the most important, you know, when, you know, we haven't had a safety audit in several years, but to know and think that we're doing well, but to see that we can do better is always positive. So at this moment, there's my orange question mark. I'm happy to take any questions that we can answer.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. Thank you for this information. And questions from the Board? Mira?
Sure. Hi, and thank you. I don't think minor questions are just two things to think about. I always worry about closed classrooms, and I understand that, you know, there's a tension. So I guess my thought would just be to think about how we might counter the closing of our communities, you know, if we have to have doors closed, just something to think about. And the other thing is, is the ICE program. I would just urge us to think about the name, because it evokes something that is the opposite, and so, just a thought.
Thank you. Very good point. Liz?
I was just wondering, since the pandemic, was, were people using an open door in the classrooms for ventilation, for airflow, and how does that sort of reconcile with the new policy of wanting to close the doors?
Well, it's not a new policy that we have for keeping doors closed. It actually functions as a couple of things. One is safety, but the other one is climate control in the classrooms, because they're individually monitored.
When you say climate, you mean the temperature, not necessarily the student attitude.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, as in temperature.
Good clarification, yes.
Yeah. See where my head goes. But I totally, see what you did, Dr. Campbell.
What I think he's referring to with the climate, there have been times where teachers have left windows open or doors open for ventilation, and in the middle of winter, then we have a busted pipe. So we've all, you know, like Robbie Brown puts out on the regular throughout the year, hey, keep your doors and windows locked, you know, it's not just for the purpose of safety and security.
But I will add, because of the pandemic, of course, people wanted to have flow, airflow in the classrooms. So obviously, to have the windows open is one thing, but to have a cracked door, just improve that. And that was just a mitigating factor that we did to try to help reduce the spread of COVID in the building.
Other questions? So lots to think about here, lots to learn continuously, talk about and learn. So thank you again. Thank you for your report.
Thank you. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I left without not giving a shout-out to our safety staff.
Yes.
When we talk about, I think Dr. Campbell talked about the power of relationships. When we talk about, I think Dr. Campbell talked about the power of relationships. So to know that we do have a safety staff who prioritizes that and our faculty, you know, we, I don't think we give credit to our students more than we should. I tell you, every single day, they are managing themselves and their behaviors and informing adults and trusted folks in the building about potential situations that happen. We, we watch that unfold every day. And I just wanted to, to just kind of double down on that whole notion of building relationships and connections and how paramount it is with what we're trying to do in the school community. And know that we're doing everything we can to improve those relationships, but I'm super happy with the foundation of where we are. We're in a good place. Could be better, but we're in a good place.
Thank you. Thank you for adding that important piece. All right. Okay. The next item on our agenda is an update from the ETHS Educational Foundation and the Alumni Association.
And you can see we have Joanne Burchi of the Foundation and David Futransky of the Alumni Association. And they have a really nice report for us as well as explaining an approach that they're going to be doing with an alumni representative through the foundation as we look forward to the, the next big wave of improvements at ETHS.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Good evening, board, and Dr. Campbell, members of the school board. It's a privilege to provide an update on the ETHS Foundation this evening. The last time we were here was in 2019 when we were in person. On behalf of the Foundation's Board of Directors and staff, I'm happy to report that the Foundation has done well and exceeded its fundraising goals over the past two years. Our donor base is growing, and while the bulk of our gifts come in from individual giving, we've had a successful virtual fundraiser in 2020, and we were back in person for Wild Free ETHS at Robert Crown, and I saw most of you there, so thank you. It really affirms us to have the support of the school board. We're so grateful to everyone who stood by us, especially during the remote period of, of learning. Our supporters include alumni, parents, grandparents, local businesses, family foundations, all entities that believe deeply in our mission of equity and excellence here at ETHS. Last year, 75% of our total revenue came from alumni. But our non-alumni supporters are growing, and if you look at the number of donors, 45% of the donors were non-alums last year, which is a significant increase. Donors near and far are so proud of our school, and we received gifts from people who say that it's directly connected to the experience they've had at ETHS. They send us as little as $2. To last year, we had a record-breaking $1.5 million single individual gift from an alum from the UK. No gift is too small. When the students came back together in the fall, our school was beautiful and welcoming and waiting for them, thanks to the school leadership and the Building Grounds Committee and everybody who, who made that happen. I'm happy to say that there was evidence of philanthropic support on every corner of this high school and campus. For starters, in October, a band instruction tower was installed erected on the corner of Lake Street and Dodge Avenue. The students haven't gotten a chance to use it just yet, but we are looking forward to them using this very, very innovative piece of equipment, of a structure. And now with that structure, which was fully funded at the tune of $75,000 by donors, the, the band can practice in its complete squad out there on that field. The district has had a multi-year, multimillion-dollar campaign to do the locker rooms, and we're in the midst of that. And when the school district asked the Foundation Board to contribute to that, to invest in that project, we last year gave $350,000 towards the girls' and all-gender locker room, and will be contributing another $30,000 this year towards a new physical education Donors contributed in the past two years, $365,000 to the remarkable major renovation project, the multimillion-dollar project that the district is undertaking in the ETHS auditorium. Anyone who came to Joseph or one of their recent spring concerts were dazzled by the new lights and the improved sound. It's wonderful that our performances will be more spectacular, but on top of that, our student technicians have the opportunity to use new digital sound and lighting equipment that is industry quality and could prepare them for future careers. The last major renovation that the Foundation supported is the new ETHS Lit Lab up on the second floor. We are so proud to have contributed $550,000 towards the renovation and nearly $100,000 additional support for literacy resources, scholarships for teacher endorsements, and a summer literacy program that helps not only ETHS students, but elementary school students in our community. This next slide shows the historical growth of Foundation investments. You can see from 2008 to 2021 what, what the trajectory was. And it isn't ironic that it also follows the tenure of Dr. Witherspoon. I can honestly say that having the support and the validation from the leadership at the top makes the difference. It increased our visibility and the confidence of our donors to give to our school. I look forward to working with Dr. Campbell in this same capacity because I know he's already interested in partnering and, and talking with our alums and our most generous So in the last 14-plus years, we've raised $9.5 million, actually, we've raised more. That's what we've given to the school after our expenses, which are pretty minimal. $7.6 million of that is for campus advancements, capital improvement projects, as the district calls them. Last year, we gave the most, the largest amount of grant money to the school at $1.7 million. During the past 14 years, this level of support has supported over 25 extraordinary capital improvement projects. But on top of that, we have been able to invest in some non-capital improvement projects. For example, now our supporters are, are supporting the geometry construction program, and we're helping to fund the gap between what that house costs and what it can be sold for affordable housing. We are also supporting the STEAM Design Thinking class, a really innovative capstone class for our seniors. And what the Foundation has been able to provide is to build out the capacity in the classroom with a PIP fellow from Northwestern. During the pandemic, we had many, many donors contribute to the Student Response COVID Fund. And initially, that was used for things like technology and hotspots and emergency needs for our students during the pandemic. Now, the funds that we have are being used for such entities, initiatives as the Music Lessons Scholarship Fund, which provides financial support for students to take private lessons and stay in the band, even if they can't afford that on their own. We are also supporting workforce development through the iKit Internships and Job Shadowing Program. This spring break, 26 students participated in the first job shadowing program, and the Foundation supported the compensation for those students. So if they were not working their part-time job that week, they didn't lose any of that income that they might be saving for their colleges. What are we imagining next? This is exciting. Last year, our Foundation Board went through the strategic planning process and determined that our organization is positioned to take the necessary steps to increase its support and impact. With the 100th year of our building approaching and an upcoming centennial celebration, we believe there is great opportunity to tie our development efforts into this historic Currently, we're raising money for the South Community Center, South Community Room on the second floor improvement project. We anticipate calling it Alumni Hall and having it be a state-of-the-art learning center that you would find over at Kellogg or one of our other local universities or colleges with global technology to conference in people all over the world. We also anticipate that this could be a launching pad for our celebration, for our centennial in 2024. On top of that, we are embarking on multi-year fundraising. We're pivoting from taking one project that usually Mary and this administration has helped us think about to a longer-range, larger-in-scope project that would incorporate multi-year fundraising. This is really exciting. We've already committed some initial funds, and you're going to hear a little bit more about this, for a discovery phase to identify what that might entail and what the budget could be. And then eventually, the Foundation will do a feasibility study to see how much we can raise, what's fundable, and what resources we need to be successful. And I think that's a perfect segue for me to turn to David Futransky, who's going to take us a little bit further to talk about the centennial and the discovery phase that I just barely alluded to.
Thank you, Joanne. Pull that word. Think you can hear me okay? We are embarking on a centennial. The building you sit in was built and opened on September 11th, 1924. So we are 98 years away from that opening, and the centennial is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate. I should mention that we just mailed the kit out to our alumni. There are about 30,000 who receive it in the mail, and we are now approaching 10,000 who receive it electronically. Our goal is to move that to more and more electronic delivery and less paper delivery in the future. But when you have the majority of your alumni being older, they still like to read the newspaper and hold it in their hands, so we're still sending it out that way. We should also note that because of not being able to celebrate over the last couple of years, we have three 50th reunion celebrations this fall. The classes of 1970, '71, and '72 are celebrating their 50th. We have three 25th reunion celebrations as well. So we're going to be very busy hosting tours, dealing with groups, and we have over the last five or six years actually started to get significant class gifts out of 50th reunion classes as people get nostalgic and want to come back and support ETHS. And we work closely with the Foundation on that. We have three themes to our centennial celebrate. We want to have some community parties. We want to celebrate the things about ETHS in this building, in the center of our community. And we want to narrate the stories of ETHS, and we want to sustain future growth. And I'm going to talk about those three very quickly. We're going to celebrate by having the Alumni Association work with different groups to host parties, host gatherings, host tours, host lectures, all sorts of events in the building and in the community. We've started some discussion with the city, I think in 20, this fall of 2024, there will be centennial banners all over, the light posts of Evanston, celebrating our 100 years at Church and Dodge. This is what Church and Dodge looked like in 1919. This is looking actually from Lake Street North, or what would be Lake Street North. This was where you're sitting was a farmer's field. These fields were leased. There were a series of tenant farmers who took up the land around ETHS. And there were a number of referendums. They finally passed one in 1919 to build the high school. The school had been at Elmwood and Dempster, had overgrown its facilities, and was renting space in second floors of buildings in downtown Evanston for students who couldn't fit into Elmwood and Dempster. So kids were going back and forth to Davis Street and Dempster to fill out their day. And the city pushed for referendums. It took the end of World War I for them to finally pass a referendum that would allow them to raise $1,300,000 through bonds to be able to build this building. $1,300,000 was what it took. Mary, if I gave you that, you'd build a whole new, three classrooms, I think. In 1920, there was a sign up on the corner of Church and Dodge, so you're looking south, and it says, "The high school give boys and girls a chance for a better education." This was one of the first attempts to get people to donate to the construction. After the referendum had passed, they were looking for more money. The fields were still being farmed at that point, and it took them a couple of years to buy the leases out, move the farmhouses out, and be able to start. When they started, the school board was not wearing Team of Eight t-shirts. I think they dressed a little differently. You can, if you look real closely, you can see the fox heads and tails on the women's coats. It's a little hard to tell who's the, you know, who's who there, but this was the board around 1920 at the groundbreaking event for the high school. I don't, I don't know who the board members were. We can research and find that out if you'd like. This is looking out of what would be Joanne's, my office area today, out of West 127. And you can see that we had our priorities straight. We built our track and football field before we built the school. Or that's what the athletic director told me, was that our priorities were right. You can get some idea, that farmhouse that was there became the construction headquarters where they got started. And in September of 1924, this is what the front of the building looked like. We have discovered that if you go to the other side of the building, west and south, the west side wasn't built in 1924. That took them till 1926 because they ran out of money. So they built the classrooms on the east side of the hallway. They put a wall up, and they waited till they had more money to be able to finish that side of the building. And this was what, an art studio, this was on the second floor in the H hallway around 1924 when the building opened. And you can see that they were doing studies of plants and drawing plants at that time. So this is some of the things we've uncovered about the building and where we're starting from. Our goal is to now move on and move forward. We want to tell the stories that have not been shared as much as stories we've told over the years. If we look at the distinguished alumni wall, it is dominated by men and it is dominated by whites. And there are plenty of other people, people of color, women who went through ETHS over the years. We need to tell their stories better. One of the places we're going to tell those stories is in Alumni Hall, the room that's called A252 today. The class of 1970 is in the process of having one of their classmates, who just won a Guggenheim Foundation Award, as an artist, he is going to create a mural commemorating ETHS from the late '60s, early '70s. And it's going to become a centerpiece on a wall up there with stories of individuals of, of ETHS told around that mural, so that there'll be a big place there in the hallways where. of ETHS told around that mural, so that there'll be a big place there in the hallways where we can start telling other stories and putting in front of students a different narration. We're talking about sustaining and looking to build, and a Capitol campaign needs a reason to do something, and the cause of having a centennial to celebrate lets us think about supporting mid-21st century wild kids. We are looking at supporting student success, student opportunity, access, sustainability. We're looking at being fiscally responsible as we do that. And we have been working with a firm called Cotter Consulting, a woman-owned business that works with school districts around the nation. They have worked in the area with Highland Park Deerfield, Hinsdale, Niles, I'm sorry, with Oakton Community College on developing master plans and working as an owner's representative. In your packet, I believe, there is, on the consent agenda, an agreement with Cotter. The foundation is funding the work with Cotter this year, but it will come to you for approval. It will be a gift from the foundation to fund the work with Cotter on behalf of the district. We did interview other firms. Cotter was the one that seemed to best meet everybody's needs in working in this. Cotter currently is working with us, listening. They are on a listening tour at the moment. They have met with many of the administrators, many of the department chairs. They're starting to meet with teachers who use space. Our focus for this work is the south end of the building, the arts wing. The area that was built in the late 1950s and into the '60s that really hasn't much, had much done to it. And when I walk back into some of those areas, when I walk on the third floor of the arts wing, my mind takes me back to 1965. I walk into a room that had my typing class. We don't have typing anymore. We had keyboarding, but now kids learn that well before they get to high school. But you can still see in that room where the long tables were bolted to the floor, and the typewriters, in my mind, I see, bolted to those tables. There aren't enough outlets in that room. The room's not designed for a 21st century class. It was designed for a mid-20th century class. We have things like, throughout that area of the building, when you walk through the hallways on the first floor, the display cases look like you're walking into 1958. It's a nice time travel, but it's not necessarily the environment we want for 21st century students. We have a plan with Cotter of working with them to visit with a number of people throughout the building. If any of the board members would be interested in talking with them, we'll be happy to set up a meeting for you to visit with them. They're listening. They're asking questions about, what would you like to do in this space? If you could design the space from scratch, what would it look like? How would you fix it? We're not promising anything. We're creating some vision, we're creating some ideas, and this will help us create priorities. It will help us get to a point where we can go out in a request for qualifications for architects and engineers, which will happen sometime this summer. We'll take the vision that Cotter helps us develop, we'll clear it with, work with administration on that, and then we'll put it out for a request for qualifications. That process will lead us to have a firm that we can work with, that will have continuity of design, will be working with one firm instead of several firms. There will be a bidding, basically a bidding process for people to come in and tell us what they would do and what it would cost to do it. And then we start putting price tags on what these different desires to do things in the arts wing, the little theater, the classrooms in the A wing, the cooking area, the fashion design area, the engineering lab, A252, and areas down at that south end of the building that have not, other than the ceramics lab and the literacy lab, have gotten the attention that other places have gotten. All of, I think, almost every department in the building has a class down in that area. So we're moving from calling it the arts wing to maybe the arts and innovation wing. We're looking at, all of the innovation goes on with our students down there in various fields across the board, and our goal is to be able to prioritize what we want to do, stage what we want to do over a period of years, put price tags on it so we know how much money we need to raise to be able to do it, and come back over the next couple of years with a more detailed plan, a more specific plan, and specific goals of what we will be raising, to have a multi-year, multimillion-dollar campaign to make some changes that will help benefit ETHS students as we move towards the middle of the 21st century. And that's it. We'll take any questions if you have them.
Wow, very exciting times. Really exciting. Looking forward to this. Board, any questions from the board?
Thank you. That all sounds great, and I love the history lesson, so any more of those you have for us, come back anytime. But I wanted to just flag that in the process of focus groups and survey and community conversations that we did around the superintendent search, we heard from our students that there was concerns about equity within the building in terms of what got attention and what didn't. And I raised that more towards what you're talking about doing in that, I hope that you're talking to our current students and the firm you're working with is talking to them. I think the students really have a lot to say and could be really helpful in giving you a perspective that, you know, as much as I love the history lessons, maybe that's not what they want, I don't know. So I guess I just encourage you to talk to our students, because we heard some things that we hadn't really thought of, to be honest with you, and I can only imagine that that will be the case if you speak to them as well.
Great. Thanks, Pat. We will include in the listening tour with Cotter some groups of students. We'll try to get some groups together over the next couple of weeks. Right now, we, you know, their voice is important because they are users of the space as well.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank you for the narrative part, you know, being more inclusive. So I just want to lift that up because that is so important, especially, I think, for the Black community who have been here for such a very long time in Evanston, and a lot of things were taken away from the Black community during, you know, during integration and what have you. YMCA has an example. And so it is so important to make sure that we reflect their participation and their history and the changing history that's going on right now within our community inside this institution. Probably the oldest, one of the oldest, probably outside of Northwestern, being here in Evanston, and to have an entire race be voided out of that experience, I'll just say it's way overdue. So I appreciate you making that a point, and I just wanted to lift that up again because I, that made me lean in even further, listening, and gave me some pride.
Thank you. Dino Robinson, who is one of our distinguished alums, has volunteered to work with us and bring the resources of Shorefront to help in the process. We do plan to use students in researching the process of what's going to go up on those walls and working with a number of our history and social science classes, our civics classes, to get kids involved in the research projects to help with finding those stories and researching them. We do have kids who are currently coming in, looking in our archives, which go back to 1883, and finding stories. We have scrapbooks and finding things that we're all learning about together. There will also be an overall committee of 100. This was something that the pandemic hurt us with putting together, but we're looking, and I'm talking to people in all areas of the community, to be part of a committee that will meet a couple of times, but will be sort of a group to help us reach out further into the community and into various constituencies so that we can have students, faculty, staff, but people in the community who are alumni and who are touched by the high school be part of helping us to shape the narrative and the celebration phases.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, that sounds wonderful. I hope that we can invite community members that don't typically come and participate so that they can see some of these highlights, some of these stories that they don't hear, because I think what happens is people don't appreciate that we are telling, we're different, we're telling a different story. We're very intentional about it.
Yeah.
Exciting. Really exciting.
I would just add, and it is so exciting, that if you did need any board members to work with Cotter, volunteering myself, and, or at least just to talk with them, I'm thinking podcasts, I'm thinking StoryCorps, you know, just in getting, reaching out into our communities, but extending the listening capabilities. So I don't know, you probably have already thought of that, but...
One, I appreciate it. I'll set up a time with you to come meet when they're going to be in the building, which is usually three or four days a week now for the next five or six weeks. So we'll find an hour for you to sit down and talk with them. We don't want to get too far out ahead of ourselves in the centennial. We don't want to announce the fundraising aspects until Joanne and the foundation have raised some leadership gifts for the foundation. We can't do that until we know how much money we're going to need. So we don't, you know, it's sort of a quiet phase, and that's normal in a Capitol campaign. We don't want to get too much noise and excitement out there until we have something really to get excited about, and that's going to happen in the 24, 25 school year in a big way. So we have some time to build our base up. If you look at a Capitol campaign, normally 50, 60, 70% of the goal is raised before they announce, a campaign is announced. And the foundation and Joanne will be doing a lot of work, talking to a lot of our most generous supporters to help us, but we don't want to have the community doing one thing over here while we're in that phase. So it doesn't all happen overnight. We have a couple of years to work on this. We're coming to you now to give you a heads up about where we're going with this, and we will be asking many of you to be part of that committee of 100 and help us shape the overall thing as we move it down the road.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful. Very exciting. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Excellent.
The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Babus, do we have comments from the public?
Yes, we do. Let me go over the introduction to public comments. Speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they have signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep the time and signal you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy. I will let you know it is time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that becomes necessary. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern. Please state your name. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comments, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. So let me set my timer up, and as I'm setting my timer up, our first public comment is from Eris McGuire.
My name is Eris McGuire. I am a sophomore at ETHS and member of E-Town Sunrise. If you've seen the chalked-up sidewalks outside of Entrance One and our walkout just a few weeks ago for Earth Day, you probably know what we want to talk about. ETHS needs a sustainability coordinator. In early 2020, this district hired a sustainability coordinator to respond to demands for climate action from students and community members, but currently, the position is vacant. I trust that most everyone I am speaking to understands the urgency of climate action, especially pertaining to community representation. Having someone who understands the urgency and importance of this position is essential to improving the well-being and sustainability of our community and student population. In hiring a sustainability coordinator, we can craft and implement a comprehensive plan to reduce the school's carbon footprint, work collaboratively and transparently with the student population, support climate literacy, and create a culture of sustainability, making ETHS a leader in climate-conscious education.
Two minutes.
Ensure that the district conserves resources, resulting in financial savings. On our walkout we held in March, we riled up support and cheers from the student body and the larger community in support for hiring a sustainability coordinator. We are the generation that will face most of the repercussions and deadly consequences of the climate crisis, and if I'm going to speak for most of us, we can feel powerless in taking action, especially in our community. But as a community, we do have so much of an impact, and if this district follows through on their promises, we can bring hope into the student body and ensure they have a voice when fighting for sustainability and a climate-conscious ETHS. Thank you.
Our second public comment is from Nathaniel Orloff Meyer.
First, I'd just like to thank the board for the honor to speak today. So I'm Nathaniel Orloff Meyer. I'm a graduating senior, and I'm the current Hub Treasurer of E-Town Sunrise. As all of you should already know, in 2018, the City of Evanston created the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, or CARP. And just a few weeks ago, on April 25, the city declared a climate emergency. This holds the city accountable to goals set in CARP, notably cutting citywide emissions in half by 2025 and net zero emissions by 2050. Initially, this may seem kind of irrelevant to District 202, but as one of the largest employers in the city, it's crucial that the district takes bold, decisive action to support the city's goals. The main obstacle to this kind of action is that there is no one in the administration with the time or relevant experience to make it happen, which is why the district so badly needs a sustainability coordinator. In a year where the pandemic has brought many additional expenses to the district's budget, it may seem unwise to add another administrative position, but the City of Evanston and District 65 have both hired sustainability coordinators in the past five years, even with the pandemic. Why? Well, for one, it's just the right thing to do, but also because the savings that this position can create are in the same neighborhood as its expected salary, so it essentially pays for itself. For reference, District 65 hired a part-time sustainability coordinator.
Two minutes.
For around $30,000 a year, with the expectation of transitioning to full-time next year, while the city's full-time sustainability coordinator has a salary of just over $110,000. Compare these numbers to the $16 million that the San Francisco Unified School District has saved since hiring a sustainability coordinator in 2008. Obviously, San Francisco is a much larger district than 202, so the comparison isn't perfect, but small districts can also see huge savings from sustainability projects, like the $100,000 that the Batesville, Arkansas, school district, about the same size as 202, saves each year after adding a 760-kilowatt solar installation. That's $100,000 savings from just a singular project. A full-time sustainability coordinator at ETHS could take charge of multiple projects like this and end up saving the school enough money to offset most, if not all, of their salary. Aside from infrastructure improvements to reduce the district's direct carbon footprint, a sustainability coordinator could also help the district establish a climate curriculum and other related education to ensure that ETHS graduates are prepared to become leaders in a world where climate change is growing into a bigger and bigger part of people's everyday lives.
One minute.
The current climate curriculum committee is doing good work, but slowly, and this all could happen faster and more efficiently with a sustainability coordinator to really guide the project through from its current state all the way to implementation. Ultimately, I understand that next year's budget is already pretty much set in stone, so it could be difficult to make space for a sustainability coordinator this year, but if the district really wants to show that it's serious about climate action, it can choose sustainability and climate education as one of the new district goals for the next five years. Setting this goal would hold the district accountable for measurable progress on one of the most pressing issues of this generation and set a strong framework for the addition of a sustainability coordinator and other important measures to next year's budget. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is FOIA. Dr. Babus, we have three, is that correct?
Yes, there are three FOIAs. Marsh, Sternstein, and March. and March. And the response in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next item is board committee reports. Board, turn it over and see if anyone from the board has attended any meetings recently. Okay. All right. The next item is student board report. So Barbara.
Hi, everyone. So this week is full of AP testing, such as last week, so a lot of students are in and out of class, just like myself, but it seems to be going very smoothly. Students have, like, time to study the day before because they're excused from some of their classes, and that's been really helpful. So everything's been going well with that. Also, the seniors' last day is on Thursday, so I know a lot of them are excited. And then after that, they have prom and graduation, so I've heard a lot of buzz about that. And I think that's something to celebrate and something really exciting for them. As for student union, we're wrapping up our projects for this year and kind of putting like a "to be continued" sticker on them, hoping to revisit them next year. And then as for the rest of us, so juniors and sophomores and freshmen, we have less than three weeks left, so we're almost at the end. And yeah, that's all the exciting stuff happening last quarter. Yeah. Thank you.
It's amazing. This year has flown by. Wow. All right. Dr. Witherspoon.
Well, I'm just going to pick up on that theme, Barbara, since it is indeed the closing out of the school year. We have the incoming freshman sports activity fair on Tuesday, May 17. We've been doing this now for a number of years. That's will be at 6:30 PM here at ETHS. And we find that our incoming freshmen and their families really appreciate learning all of the sports and activities that will be available to them here. And they can actually sign up and get on some distribution lists and start activating that WildKit involvement. We are going to have one more WildKit Academy. That'll be on Saturday, the 21st. It'll be at 9:00 AM. And I'll just remind folks that this is a Saturday program where our students can come and get extra support. And it continues to be highly successful. And we have hundreds of students come on a Saturday morning. The latest U.S. News &amp; World Report continues to put ETHS among, in the 97th percentile among high schools in the country. I always want to remind people that if you were to take out, just looking at the schools ahead of us, if you were to take out the selective enrollment, the magnet schools, the private schools, the charter schools, all those schools that actually control who comes into the school, you would find that ETHS is more like in the 99th percentile of comprehensive high schools that embrace and welcome all students in the community. So kudos to our students, to our staff, to our teachers, obviously, and to all of this community that puts such a high significance and priority on education. It really does translate into what happens at this high school. So again, this theme, Barbara, Wednesday night is ETHS Senior Scholarship Night. It's going to be a virtual experience again this year. And we'll be getting out the YouTube link on that real soon to folks so that everybody can tune into that. And then on Thursday, this Thursday, May 12, is the last day of class for, of school and classes for the class of 2022. It's always a very special and emotional day on the last day for seniors in any school, but really, it's a very emotional, meaningful day when our students realize that they're truly wrapping it up. However, when they're dismissed that afternoon, we're going to have a block party for them over at Le Gere Field. And so this is something that we've not tried on the last day of school before, but we have had this kind of celebration before over there, and it's gone well. So we think it'll be a great way for the students to celebrate their last day, because then on Saturday is prom at 7:30 at Navy Pier. And on Sunday, the 24, second, I'm sorry, at 10:00 AM at Welsh Ryan Arena is graduation. And there we are, another year pretty well wrapped up. Last day of school, as Barbara alluded to, is Friday, the 27th. And yes, I'm now talking about summer school begins the following Thursday, June 2. And we're tying a bow on another great year at ETHS. That concludes my report.
Wow. Okay. We are moving along. So many areas. All right. So we are at items for action. And the first item for action is the organization of the new board. So I'm going to ask for a motion with a roll call vote to be made to retire the board, sin and die. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. So Dr. Babus, would you please assume the role of as president pro tem?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Let's call the meeting back to order. May I get a roll call, please?
Andy?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Monsell?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Rollowitz?
Here.
Teterich?
Here.
Savage Williams?
Here.
I'm going to do, start with the election of officers. I will take nomination for the office of president. Vice president and secretary nominations need not be seconded. Each nomination will be voted on in the order of their nomination. Once a candidate receives a majority of votes of the board, four votes, the election process is over. I'd like to call for nominations for the office of president of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I'd like to nominate Pat Savage-Williams for president of the board.
Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Monique Parsons for vice president.
We're going to go, we're going to go in order. We start with just president, and then we'll go in order. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay. Seeing no other nominations for president, we have a roll call, please.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes.
And now the new president, well, the returning president, will assume the chair and continue the nomination process for officers.
Thank you. And thank you, board. So now I'd like to call for nominations for vice president of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
Okay. Let's see. I'd like to nominate Monique Parsons for vice president.
You scared me there before.
No, I think I read your memo.
All right. Are there other nominations? If not, I'd like to call for a vote. Could we have a roll call, please?
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now I'd like to call for nominations for secretary of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I nominate Pete Babus.
All right. Are there other nominations? No way, Pete. All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Andy?
No, no, I'm just kidding. Yes. Just keeping you interesting tonight.
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Thank you. Now I'd like to call for a motion to appoint Mary Rodino as school treasurer of the Board of Education for a one-year term with a compensation of $1,000.
So moved.
We have a roll call, please?
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Babus?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the organization of the board.
Where are my resolutions?
Oh, yes. Resolutions. All right. So resolution ratifying contracts, policies, and bylaws.
We can read them all together, actually.
Yes, read them all together.
Read them all together, and then we'll take one vote.
Yes. So we have several resolutions. Then we have, so that was A. Then we have resolution designating signatory. Then we have a resolution regarding check signatures. We have resolution establishing dates to review closed session minutes. Resolution establishing regular meeting dates and place. And a resolution ratifying approved depositories.
So moved.
There's another one.
Is there another one?
Oh, maybe that's, we don't do that one yet, maybe.
No.
Right.
So far, so good.
Under the.
Okay. So we have a...
So moved.
Yeah. A motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
We have a roll call.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Teterich?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is review of student election and oath of office for student board representative.
I will start with the, I'll read the resolution declaring the election results.
Okay.
That's typically what we do.
Thank you.
Be it resolved by the Board of Education, District 202, County of Cook, State of Illinois, that returns from the student election held April 29, 2022, and said high school district for the purposes of election of one student member and one student alternate member of the Board of Education of said district to serve from May 9, 2022 to May 2023 are in your packet. They're there, they're there with the votes received. Therefore, the Board of Education finds and declares that the following are duly elected student members with offices as specified below of the Board of Education to serve from May 9, 2022 to May 2023. Nicole Yao, student board member of education, and Sophie Brown is the alternate member for the Board of Education. And then we would approve the resolution.
Okay. Could I have a motion for resolution approval, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Teterich?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rollowitz?
Yes.
Savage Williams?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we will administer the oath of office at the podium.
All right.
Nicole, if you could come up. I'll meet you up here.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm going to read the oath of office. You're going to repeat after me.
Okay.
I will go slow, I promise.
Okay.
I, say your name.
I, Nicole Yao.
A student member of the Board of Education.
A student member of the Board of Education.
Of Evanston Township High School.
Of Evanston Township High School.
District 202.
District 202.
County of Cook, Illinois.
County of Cook, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support, wait.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And.
And.
The Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which.
To which.
I have been elected.
I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And Nicole, you can, this will be the last board meeting. You get to attend by sitting near the front. And we're going to be saying goodbye to Barbara and that. And that's going to be your seat at all the upcoming board meetings. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nicole. Welcome, Nicole. All right. So it's really, it's really great to meet Nicole. But I'd like to take a moment to thank Barbara for all of your dedication and your commitment to us during this rather wonky year, I would say. You had a chance to watch and be a part of this board as we really tried to deal with some complicated issues. And I always appreciated, of course, your reports, but also the times that you chimed in and that you shared and expressed the perspective of the students. It was, it's always great. It's always important for us to hear student perspective. And I know that there are many perspectives in a school this size. I know that. And I, and I know that you're challenged sometimes to, to present those perspectives and probably weren't always able to do that. But that's okay, because it helped us think about the perspectives that are here, that we're hearing, and consider what perspectives we're not hearing. So thank you. And I'm excited for your future. Excited that you are probably going to do some great things. I hope that this is a first, maybe, maybe not a first, I don't know, but this is a step in you really understanding the complexities of what it's like to be a leader and the challenges and really take into thinking about policies. And, you know, as we talk about the future and impacting the changes, you know, this is the group that can have that impact. So it's really been great having you here. I can't believe the year has gone by so quickly. So thank you. And I'll open it up to any other board members that would like to say some words.
I didn't write anything down, even though I knew tonight was going to be your last night. And so I won't be too long, because you know I don't like a long meeting. I just wanted to say that it's refreshing. I've been on the board such a long time now. We had this long stretch of male student school board reps. And then in more recent years, we've had, we've had a few women, young women, including yourself. So slowly, the women are catching up as far as the student school board rep goes. And I have to say that yours was a particularly notable voice of all students, but I think reflecting your female perspective. And I particularly appreciated your calling out of toxic masculinity as an issue still at this high school, in the same vein that some of your predecessors had called it out. And you also called out allegations of sexual gender harassment, which are tough issues and related to that topic of toxic masculinity. I appreciated hearing that from you in a persistent way. Of course, we haven't solved all those issues. We haven't gotten to where we need to be on all those things. But you were a terrific voice. And am I right that you're not a senior?
Yeah, I'm a junior.
I know. It's so, that's actually so unusual. I would say most of our student school board reps are graduating. So I think that's kind of nice. And you're going to be around, and maybe you'll just show up and watch and comment at one of our meetings in the future. I don't know. You might be really done with us. But hopefully, you'll stay in touch. And thank you for your service. It's a big job for a student. I mean, it's a big job for anybody serving in this sort of volunteer capacity. It's very thankless. But I think especially for a student who's trying to juggle your coursework as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
And best of luck.
Yeah?
Sure.
It was already on. Okay. So first of all, Lisa, don't move us, because this is the best seat right here. And I'm always so excited to see you and to be able to kind of have our sidebar a little bit and as we warm up for the evening. And, you know, I know you have mentioned your parents and their desires to ensure this future for you. And I hope... this future for you, and I hope that they're watching because I think that you're really, you would make me proud as, if you were my daughter. And I think about what Gretchen said regarding your voice, and, and I would also argue just being here, so having students in our midst, you know, given that that's our purpose, but at the table, is so important, and so I thank you for doing that as well. And I think about your, I don't know all the things about you, obviously, I know very little, but the little that you've shared, it's exciting to think that, that you've taken this on and then that you are stepping away, you know, it'll be your senior year, but you have this future in front of you and that you allowed us to, to maybe play a role in some of that, so it's just a lot of giving, and I want you to know that, and I want to thank you for that. And then the last thing that I would say is that if you do later have ideas or thoughts, please add them because it's not over, this is, you know, just something that can always continue, and I want us to learn from your perspective, as you mentioned as well, so, or I think that was Pat, actually, was talking about those multiple perspectives, because I'm always curious about the dynamic of a board, and I think we're steeped in tradition, but I, I would like to see that change, and having a student is definitely a part of that, but I think we could even do more, so give us your thoughts whenever you'd like. Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just want to add, all the great things that were already said by my colleague, but what a crazy time to leave, right? I mean, we gave you a lot, we gave you a lot, and, and you led it consistently, and just, I admire your quiet strength, right, and your ability to be unafraid to say what you want to say, what needs to be said, even though it may fall on ears that don't want to hear it, you said it anyway, and I appreciate that. And I'm excited by the fact that you are not a senior, right? Like you are a junior and you will be here next year to hold us to the, you know, to the fire, to show up and to, to remember what it was like to serve in this capacity, but to continue to advocate and share your voice. And I expect that next year will probably be bolder, right? And, and a little bit more profound, and that's exciting, and that's really exciting. So as Mira said, show up, keep coming, stay connected, and bring others with you. Thank you.
Pat?
So yeah, I completely agree with everything that's been said, but just thinking about you and your finishing up tonight, you know, for me, and I, I think you've heard this a lot from administrators and board members, but we really need to hear from students because the perspectives are so important to what we do. So in my day job, a lot of what I think about is, yeah, you can have all these great policies, but how does that fall? How does that work for the people who actually have to deal with that policy or that instructional method or whatever it is? And I am always, always thrilled to hear students talk about that because I learn so much, and then I can help the people who need to make changes learn too, and listen to those voices. And so you've just provided that so acutely, as people have said, at such an important time, and so I'm very grateful to you for that, and I, I, as Monique said, keep coming and bring others, but I also hope that this experience has taught you about your voice, and I'm expressing to you how important it is, and I hope you have begun to see that and understand that. And this is not about us, this is about you, you have, you have a very powerful voice, and I hope that you will continue to use it, certainly next year when you can tell us stuff, but even beyond, and never be afraid to, to speak up because it, it's so important to hear from that, the perspective that you offer, be it as a student, as a woman, as whatever you decide to do in your life. And so I, I really applaud you for what you've done here as a junior in high school, and I can only imagine what you'll continue to do from here on out. So thank you for being here, and thank you for all that you've given us, and I wish you well.
Liz?
Barbara, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed having you here on the board. Listening to your statements every, every month has been really enlightening, and we've learned a lot from you. I definitely wanted to point out that I respect and admire you for taking on the difficult and serious situations regarding sexual harassment and sexual assault that have been occurring among our students, and for you advocating for them and having the courage to come talk to us about it, I really want to commend you for that, and I hope that your student, your fellow students felt like their voices were heard here through you, so I just wanted to say thank you for that, and we did learn a lot from you. And I just hope everything goes great your senior year, and I wish you well in all of your future endeavors.
And I'm just going to build on the wonderful things that our colleagues have said tonight. You know, this is a moment, as you're developing as a leader, that you try something out and you take a chance, and I think you saw the impact that you had, and you felt that, and a lot of us felt that, so I want to encourage you to keep being brave and take those chances because you'll see where they land, and you'll see the kind of power that you have. And also, the other thing that I was really struck by as I listened to you was, was how you always led with empathy, and you led with a concern for students, your fellow students, your peers, and, and representing their perspectives, and you did that from a we place, and I really admired that, and I liked that, and I, I want to encourage you to keep doing that, too. So be brave and keep leading with empathy, and thank you for your service.
So once again, Barbara, thank you, and I do hope we see you next year. And you've got Nicole to help and guide, and Nicole, you have a consultant, and that is unusual.
Yeah.
That we have that, so thank you again. And I have a little something for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say a couple things?
Oh, shoot, yeah.
Yeah, so this experience has been one of, I think, the most important ones for me in high school, so I want to thank you all for that. It really taught me how collaborative ETHS is, just like being in this position and just having this seat on the board, like others mentioned, it really shows like what we stand for as a school and how we work as a collective. And just being here, like as a student before, I didn't really know what went on behind the scenes, even though it's public school board meetings, it's still behind the scenes. I didn't know how there was monthly reports on student well-being and student activities and student mental health. I never knew that there was a group of people like consistently working toward improving ETHS, and I admire that so much, and I'm so grateful for the school even more than I was before because it, like, being here has opened my eyes to just a whole nother level of, you know, adults caring about us and really like, yo, you guys are the reasons, like, we succeed, you know, high school is so important, and I just want to thank you all for that, as well as welcoming me and teaching me so much, I've learned so much over the past year, so I really want to thank everyone for that, and I'm not going to leave, you know, I'll be here, I'll be working with Nicole, I'll be working with Student Union, so this isn't even a goodbye, it's more of like a thank you so much, and, you know, I'll see you in a couple months.
Thank you.
Ready or not.
Right. Okay, so is Barbara's going to exit? We'll invite Nicole up.
Yes. You say so. Lisa.
Take her, please.
Give me the nameplate back, I got a slide.
Lisa's in charge.
Honest, it was Lisa.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Come on up, Nicole. And I'll tell the board, Nicole is a sophomore, so you're going to have a junior.
Another junior next year.
Wow, yeah.
Wow.
We keep pouring into them, yeah.
Yeah, we do.
They're already sweet.
All right, welcome, Nicole. So when you want to speak, push the button and the light will turn on.
Fine, okay.
If you get real close.
All right.
Hello.
Yeah, I'm in here, all right, great. Okay, welcome. All right, so I'm going to go on with our agenda, and the next item on the agenda is approval of Pride Month resolution, and Gretchen's going to read that for us.
Turn on the volume. Our resolution is titled Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month 2022. It contains excerpts from the proclamation by President Joseph R. Biden Jr. in 2021. Whereas the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in June 1969 sparked a liberation movement, a call to action that continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. Whereas Pride Month is a time to recall the trials of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ+ community has endured and to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality. Whereas the LGBTQ+ community in America has achieved remarkable progress since Stonewall. Whereas historic Supreme Court rulings in recent years have struck down regressive laws, affirmed the right to marriage equality, and secured workplace protections for LGBTQ+ individuals in every state and territory. Whereas for all of our progress, there are many states in which LGBTQ+ individuals still lack protections for fundamental rights and dignity in hospitals, schools, public accommodations, and other spaces. No more so than now, I would add. Whereas our nation continues to witness a tragic spike in violence against transgender women of color. LGBTQ+ individuals, especially youth who defy sex or gender norms, face bullying and harassment in educational settings and are at a disproportionate risk of self-harm and death by suicide. Whereas we recognize the resilience and determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically. Whereas we affirm our obligation to uphold the dignity of all people and dedicate ourselves to protecting the most vulnerable among us. Now thereby be it resolved that the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School District 202 recognizes the month of June 2022 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month, and celebrates the achievements of the LGBTQ+ community and the great diversity of the American people.
Thank you, Gretchen. Can I have a motion for acceptance, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the new superintendent's contract, Dr. Marcus Campbell.
Sorry. I didn't mean to say it like that.
I know, that was like Dr. Evil.
Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Rohlwood?
Yes.
To Terrence?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Yes. All right, thank you, monumental.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of resolution of the district's participation in the TRS Supplemental Savings Plan, approval of elementary and secondary school emergency relief, round three spending, approval of settlement agreement settling lawsuit Jonah Meadows versus Evanston Township High School District 202, approval of acceptance foundations funding for owners' representatives for capital fundraising, approval of student parking fees, approval of minutes from April 4, 2022, special meeting and closed session, April 7, 2022, special meeting and closed session, April 11, 2022, regular meeting and closed session, April 18, 2022, special meeting and closed session, April 21, 2022, special meeting. Approval of bills, treasurer's report for March 2022, personnel report, which includes appointment of the assistant superintendent for human resources and the appointment of assistant superintendent slash principal. And that's it.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, item 18, old and new business, are there any items that board would like to present?
I don't know if this is old or new business or the closing, I just wanted to say that graduation is coming before our next meeting, and so I just wanted to wish the class of 2022 well and to acknowledge that we see you, this has been a crazy ride for all of you, but you're amazing and you've done amazing things in the last four years and really proved yourselves and then some. So on a personal note, but I'm sure the rest of the board agrees that we wish you all well, we wish you a wonderful and well-deserved, you know, celebration of your achievement, and we look forward to hearing about all the great things you do once you leave ETHS, but you never really leave ETHS, you're always part of the family, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for adding that, that's, that's very important, I concur. Anything else, board members? Mira, you're like, son?
I was just prepared to say yes.
All right. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, Mira?
I move for adjourn.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Me too.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned and it's not even 9:30 yet.
Woo-hoo!